For Monday, January fourteenth, two thousand nineteen. And as required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audiotaping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the chairman prior to the start of the meeting. Hearing nobody, please join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks.
Good evening, anyone for a weekly briefing?
I can barely hear you.
Everybody? Jay?
No.
Hi Ginny.
Good evening, I'm Ginny Hewitt from Brooks Library. I have a couple announcements to make, and one, actually not a real announcement, because you can all see this, but the scaffolding's been removed at the library and our exterior preservation project is coming to a close. I don't really have more to tell you than that, because Sean Libby's in charge of it, and I didn't get an update from him today, so I'm not sure exactly when the punch list will be finished and the fencing come down. But still, it looks beautiful. You may need to wear your sunglasses if you're driving by on a sunny day, because it sure is bright and white, really pretty. Really pretty. We've got, you know, people are just so excited about it, and it's so nice to see it looking good again. So what I came to talk about was, we were notified last week that our town, the annual town reports, our collection goes back to eighteen sixty-six. So our collection was digitized by the Boston Public Library in the digital archives at no cost to the town, and is now posted on the Internet Archives. So there's a link on our website, and I'm going to send it, you know, formally to the town, so that it can be added to the town's website. I think the town has, back to two thousand six on the website, so we can add a link to where they're hosted, and that is for free also, so, nice to get free information, isn't it? So anyway, it's great for researching town history, and, you know, just a really invaluable historical tool. So, the other thing I wanted to mention is, we've had for years a subscription to a periodical database called News Bank, and it gives free access to the Cape Cod Chronicle, the Cape Codder, the Cape Cod Times, so that, you're, most of those newspapers are behind a paywall, so you only get so many free articles per month. But with the library subscription, you can log in and, and search all of that for free and research issues or events. But, the one thing that it doesn't do is, it doesn't give you a real newspaper reading experience, you know, you're just getting access to content, so certain articles of different days. Well now, we've subscribed to a product that News Bank created for, for the Clams libraries, and it's, it's called an Image Edition. So basically, it looks like the Cape Cod Times does imprint. You're reading it exactly like that. You start at our website, and choose the e-library tab, and, and put your card number in. It's, so there's still the traditional database, which again, is better for like researching an issue or, or past events, but, but, so there's a listing of the different options available. Cape Cod Times Image Edition is the second one on the list, so you want to choose that, and really, it's just like reading the newspaper for free, so, you can cancel your subscriptions. So, so a number of the Clams libraries have purchased that, not, not all of them, but with the Brooks Library card, you can get that. I did want to mention one thing, on some devices, when you're reading it, like, I like to read it on my phone, and I have a really small iPhone that I like, that small, so, you know, you have to enlarge it, it looks like the navigation arrows go away. It's really easy to get them back, but it's hard to describe that, so we're just asking if anybody has that. We don't want them to look at, people to look at and go, "Well, this is a lousy product, like, how do I get to the next page?" So, just come in, we'll show you, if you can't find it yourself. It's, it's easy to get it to come back, and, it's just, I've, I've read it a lot already, I find it, you know, really helpful. And then, one more announcement, we have, online magazines have been added to our Overdrive resource. We've had a subscription to Overdrive for eBooks and downloadable audiobooks, and this month, all the Clams libraries got a joint subscription to fifty popular magazines that will be here too. So, we've had online magazines through other things called Flipster and Hoopla, which are great, but, this is kind of one-stop shopping, because people are already using Overdrive, and, and so, it's basically, again, it's just like, it's, you see it the same way you would in print. You know, you just flip through the pages, just like you would, so, so it's an awesome product, and people will probably use it more. Otherwise, they don't go to the other products to try to find the digital magazine. So this is all in Overdrive, and people can pick whatever format they're looking for.
Great. Thank you Ginny.
Thank you.
Anybody else for weekly briefing? Evening, Richard.
Madam Chair, good evening, members of the board. Pleased to announce that Governor Baker has finally signed the bill allowing Harwich senior taxpayers to have a fifteen hundred dollar tax credit. We're the only town in the Commonwealth that has this senior tax credit available. We also filed legislation to allow other cities and towns to have this as a local option. That has not gone through yet, we will hope to file it again, so other towns in the Commonwealth have that local option. Two other things, briefly, seventeen days left to file an abatement, if you have a question or a concern about your new value on your property. And finally, we did a TV program talking about programs available to our seniors. We have a deferral program that the town offers to seniors, deferring their taxes at eight percent simple tax. That tax is not comp, or the interest, every year. And, it's a wonderful program. People cannot have over forty thousand dollars in assets, but their home is not considered an asset. It's a wonderful program where people can defer their taxes and pay it upon their estate or their death, they can pay it back any time, but it's a wonderful program. Last year, we only had four taxpayers take advantage of that. As of this year, we only have two taxpayers taking advantage of it. I want to continue to publicize it, because I think it's a great program for some of our seniors who may be struggling, have difficult times paying their taxes. If they have any questions, to please contact any of the assessors or downstairs at the assessing office.
Richard, do you have any deadlines affiliated with each of the policies you just announced, so that we make sure?
The abatements, again, February first has to be into the office, we will not take a late filing for an abatement. For the other programs, it is March first that the other things can be brought in too, so, there is time to do that. The abatements for questioning your value has to be in by February first.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Did you have questions?
No, that was my question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody for, excuse me, public, public comments or announcements? Okay, moving-
Where's Carolyn?
Yeah, Carolyn, you have nothing?
Nothing.
I just want to jump ahead for a second, under public hearings and presentations, polka the use of glyphos- gly- glyphosate.
Glyphosate.
Thank you. With Laura Kelly, we've had some questions in terms of, this isn't very clear as a public posting, and, rather than have any kind of issue in terms of an open meeting law violation, we want to be clear to say that we're, we're happy to have Laura speak. Is she here?
Not yet.
Oh, she's not, okay. Well, if you'll let her know when she comes in, because we're happy to have that presentation, but if she would like to come back and give the board a full presentation at a later date, and we'll make it a public hearing, et cetera, then we can do that. We, we would all, she's certainly welcome to have her presentation this evening, but if she would rather do a public presentation with an announcement, with the public being able to comment, we would bring her back.
And, if, if she, if she was expecting any action to be taken, it couldn't happen tonight.
Tonight, right.
It's questionable whether, under the way it was posted, whether we could actually get into a dialogue and ask any questions about it, so it would be a very minimal presentation.
Okay. So I just wanted to say that, if she was here, so that she would have that information.
She's in the computer at seven.
Okay, that, that's fine, she can, when she gets here, we'll go ahead and discuss that with her. So, do you want to go onto the consent agenda, Ed?
I'd like to present the consent agenda and the adoption of the items there on, including the minutes of November thirteenth regular session, the minutes of November nineteenth regular session, and the minutes of November twenty-sixth regular session.
Second.
Moved in second, Ed. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, public hearings and presentations, overview of the short-term rental law, John Giorgio, KP Law. Good evening, John.
Good evening. So, one of the, would you like, would you just start?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, that's good. You know, it's, it's interesting, because a lot of towns are coming up on their town meeting schedules with law enclosure deadlines, et cetera, so I thought it was important to talk to the board about the short-term rental law, and in particular, with respect to any town meeting action that you might want to consider. And, I've spent a fair amount of time, sort of digesting the law, and last week, I attended a meeting where the Commissioner of Revenue and several, several other DOR officials made a presentation here on the Cape, so, I'm happy to say that the memo that I sent you has pretty much been confirmed in every respect. There are just a few nuances that I'll let you know as we go along. So, so the, the, the new law was, or the amendment to the law was approved by the governor on December twenty-eighth, and it technically will take effect on March twenty-eighth, because that's ninety days after it was approved. But there are certain provisions in this law that will take effect either sooner or later, and I'll get into that. So, the major change in the law, well, let me start by saying, Harwich, like I believe every other community on the Cape, already has a local option rooms tax. And here in Harwich, it's four percent. And up until now, that's applied to hotels, motels, bed and breakfast establishments, which are four rooms or more, and lodging houses. So those are already taxed. The big change here is that the tax, at whatever percentage the town has, will apply to what's called short-term rentals. And a short-term rental is essentially when an individual rents a unit, it can be a house, it can be a condo, it can be a part, an apartment, for, for a rental period that does not exceed thirty-one days. So if you rent your house for a week during the summer, that is a short-term rental. If you rent your house for the entire months of July and August with one rental contract, that is not a short-term rental, and this new law does not apply. So the, the big news here is that the town will, or I should say, short-term rentals in Harwich will automatically be taxed without the town doing anything, even though the original was a local acceptance, there's no local acceptance provision in this new law. The tax will apply to any short-term rental, or, that commences on or after July first, for which a rental contract was executed on or after January first. So that, the, it, it's interesting, because the, the rental period has to commence on or after July first. So for example, I believe that the Saturday, I believe it's June thirtieth, is the Saturday before the Fourth of July week, and that's, of course, a very big rental period. This short-term rental tax will not apply if the, if it's a Saturday to Saturday rental starting on July thirtieth.
June thirtieth.
Excuse me.
June thirtieth?
June thirtieth, excuse me. If you are, if you're a Sunday to Sunday renter, and it begin, it would, would apply, because that would be July first, okay?
Even if the contract was entered into after January first?
Right, if your contract was entered into before January first, this law doesn't apply at all.
Apply at all.
Right. And I suspect there may be some rentals out there that were, where rental contracts were signed, let's say, last, last fall, so it would not apply at all.
It is, July thirtieth is the Sunday.
June, June thirtieth.
July first, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. So any contract that's sent, entered into prior to July first is not subject to this law. Now, the other important provision in this law is, and this was something that Governor Baker, you know, wanted a revision before he would sign it, is it doesn't apply to any short-term rental if the operator does not rent the, the house for less than fourteen days a year, not consecutive, consec, that would be in total, fourteen, if you, if it's fourteen days or less, you're not subject to this law at all. Okay? Now, like the, like the tax, the rooms excise tax on hotels, the operator, which would be the hotel owner, or the owner of the, the house, is responsible for paying the tax. And that tax is paid to the Commonwealth, and I believe the tax has to be remitted every thirty days. The town, in turn, receives its portion of the short-term rental tax, which in, in Harwich's case is four percent, on a quarterly basis. And that money is typically general fund revenue, so it goes right into your general fund and is available for appropriation. Now typically, DOR will allow a town to estimate local receipts, including the, the rooms tax, based upon last year's receipts, but it's unlikely that the DOR, at least for this year, is going to allow towns to estimate the increase for short-term rentals, just because nobody really knows exactly how much revenue you're going to be collecting. So, you don't have to re-accept the law, but the only thing that you could do, if you wanted to, is you could change the percentage of the local option rooms tax. That requires a town meeting vote. You can increase it, or you can decrease it. And if you do that by May thirty-first of this year, then that new percentage would Are there any questions about the short-term rental tax at this point? Because I was going to move on now to a whole new series of taxes, they're actually fees that the town could impose, if you wanted to.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to confirm, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of verbiage going on here.
Yeah.
We had originally discussed the prospect, when our delegation was here, an owner-occupied single house, it's a primary residence where they actually vote from, being exempted from this, so just want to be clear about that, that is not the case in the final legislation, then.
That's correct. That's correct.
Even if somebody were to occupy the house and take off to Nickerson State Park in an effort to pay off their house, they're subject to this rental tax.
They are. That's correct.
The other thing that I'm trying to wrap my head around is, so if somebody's got enough cash to be able to rent something for two months in the summer, they, they're not subject to it, but if somebody doesn't have enough money to do that, they only rent for one week, they are subject to it.
Correct. So whatever the rent, and you measure that by the length of the rental contract, okay?
And it is up to the homeowner, or the owner of the property, to charge the tax to the person they're renting to, and then submit that?
Well, the way I would characterize that, Julie, is, is the operator has to pay the tax. Okay? Now, when you, if you rent a hotel, you'll get, you'll get your bill, and it will, typically, it, it, it'll have the separate rooms tax enumerated. And by the way, the state rooms tax is five point seven percent, and, until July first, the, not, well, I'm sorry, the, the, the town's local option tax is four percent, and that's usually spelled out right on the bill. Okay? But it is the operator that has the obligation to actually pay the tax. Okay?
Yeah. Just to clarify, on Don's point, I, I thought I heard you say, though, that if somebody did rent their house for a week, or less than fourteen days, they would not be included in that tax.
In the aggregate, over the course of the year.
In the aggregate, over the-
But if they rented per week, they are subject.
That's correct.
If they find somebody's got a lot of money and they want to rent the whole summer, they're not subject.
That's correct.
Any other board members have any questions?
No. Okay, so, then there are two additional, what are called, community impact fees, which the town can charge, it can be up to three percent on both of them, and that fee requires an acceptance vote at town meeting, there have to be separate acceptance, acceptance votes for each one, and the fee, the money has to be paid, again, by the operator, directly to the town. And, the town has to spend at least thirty-five percent of the fees collected on either affordable housing or infrastructure. So, the first one is a tax on professionally managed units, okay? Rather than say tax, I should have said fee, it, and that's defined as one of two or more short, short-term rentals, so the first point here is, this, this fee only applies to short-term rentals, that are located in the same city or town, operated by the same operator, and are not located in a single-family, two-family, or three-family dwelling that includes the operator's primary residence. So that's where primary residence comes into, into play, in the law. And again, that's a simple majority vote, acceptance by town meeting. The second one is a fee, a community impact fee, upon each transfer of occupancy of a short-term rental that is located within a two-family or three-family dwelling that includes the operator's primary, that does include the operator's primary residence. So if you're interested in either one of these fees, you must accept the professionally managed fee first, and then and only then can you accept the owner-occupied fee. And they have to be separate articles at town meeting. Okay? Any questions about that? Yeah?
And the other requirement is that funds collected be dedicated, proportion of them be dedicated to-
Affordable housing or infrastructure.
Yeah.
A minimum of thirty-five percent. And what the DOR told us last week was, they're going to consider that a receipts reserved for appropriation. So the money would have to be appropriated by town meeting, but as you receive those funds, your finance director would put them into a separate receipts reserve account, and you have several of those, and that's available at town meeting. The other sixty-five percent can be spent however you like, and you can obviously spend more than the thirty-five on affordable housing or infrastructure. So their, their, DOR is really looking at, basically, capital projects with respect to infrastructure, with respect to affordable housing, there are other, you could spend that money other than for capital projects, for example, you could appropriate that money as a grant to your affordable housing trust, just as an example.
So, with that, the professionally managed fee, which would have to be voted on and passed, in order to have the second?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's correct. That's correct.
Don?
Yeah, two questions. We have a revenue stream from the lease of a cell tower that's disguised as a flagpole, but, we want the town meeting, and the town meeting voted to authorize the Board of Selectment to disperse funds from that, so there was an appropriation. Is it possible to do something likewise to this, so that the, the money could be dumped into our affordable housing trust on a year-by-year basis by vote of the Board of Selectment, if the town meeting authorized that to occur?
There is a way to do it. You can obviously, well, the first way, and this applies to your short-term rental tax as well, I don't know if you recall, but under the Municipal Modernization Act that was passed in two thousand and sixteen, if town meeting accepts the fourth paragraph of Chapter Forty, Section Five B, by a two-thirds vote, the town meeting can designate that a minimum of thirty, I'm sorry, of twenty-five percent of a recurring revenue, certain recover, recurring revenue, but this would include the, this tax, can be, can go into your stabilization fund, either your general stabilization fund, or a special purpose stabilization fund, without further appropriation. But, but in order to get the money out, you have to appropriate it by a two-thirds vote. So that would apply not only to the community impact fee, but it could also apply to the short-term rental tax. So for example, if you established an affordable housing special purpose stabilization fund at town meeting, town meeting at the same time could vote to dedicate any percentage of your rooms tax, but not less than twenty-five percent, to go automatically into this, into that special purpose stabilization fund.
The follow-on question is not related, but it's still a concern to me. I, I have more fingers on my hand than, than we have people in the Board of Health would be inspecting. So, just as a question here, at, at its lowest level, it seems to be predicated on the honor system, where somebody who is in his own house and wants to rent it out, self-identifies, goes and pulls a permit, and asks to be inspected. What happens if they don't? If they're not, I, I know the title of the bill was Airbnb, but that's not how everybody rented their houses through the years, how would anybody know?
Right. So, I'm going to, I can answer that now, but I, I actually are going to talk about regulation and how, what options you have, if you don't mind just holding that for a second. So, did you have a question about the special purpose stabilization fund?
Yeah, those two clauses, as I understand-
Yeah.
-the history of how this made it through the legislature over twelve years, were items that were put in by Representative Mankel, Mankiewicz, is it?
I don't-
In Boston, who headed up developing the final legislation, for, for the House, anyway, and it, and their concern, and the reason why these two issues are in, is because of the havoc that Airbnb principally, but other rental platforms also were causing in the, in the Boston housing market. The first one is established to, and, you, the fee is only chargeable in essentially apartment buildings, where you had investors basically renting out apartments, then to turn them around and rent them on a daily or weekly basis, as is a hotel room. Not only was it outbidding what regular working folks in Boston could pay, it was also taking a nice resi, you know, normal residential apartment building and turning it into a hotel, much to the chagrin of the other tenants.
Right.
And, a similar issue came up with the rental of, of, in duplexes or triplexes, where the other-
The owner occupied.
He would, he, instead of those units being available for working folks, they became sort of a, a very small, little hotel unit.
Right. Interesting.
In, in Harwich, Harwich's case, we never added on the addition, the additional two percent local option that was offered.
Right.
I know Brewster and Yarmouth and Barnstable, Provincetown and others have.
That's, that's correct. You could, your local option can be up to six percent.
Yeah. In do, in adopting a, a local option, would it be permissible to, at the time of adoption of it, dedicate those funds to go to certain places for a period of years? Say if you were to adopt a two, add the two percent-
Yes.
-say, for the first five years, and as we see how this comes out, one percent of it would go into the housing trust, and one percent of it would, say, go into the stabilization.
Okay. So, you cannot change your percentage more than once in a, a year? So, you cannot change your percentage more than once in a, a year?
Sure.
In a twenty, in a twelve-month period. If you, if you decide to do the special purpose stabilization fund, that has to be in effect for three years. You can't change, you can't revoke your acceptance of that or change the percentage for three years. But other than that, at town meeting, you could certainly increase the percentage to six percent and you could dedicate, you could do the special purpose stabilization fund. Now, in Provincetown, for example, Provincetown has a special act that dedicates various percentages of their room tax to tourism, to wastewater, to their capital stabilization fund, and to their gen, general fund. So, you could certainly, at the same town meeting, authorize a home rule petition if you didn't want to simply do the stabilization.
All right.
Okay.
Wait, before you move on, just one other question. Within the context of this, and I think, I, I think I understand one thing they're trying to accomplish, but let's say that your middle to lower end housing stock is getting gobbled up by somebody who just wants to have a bunch of rentals. So, they talk about limiting your potential for the num, numbers of these things. Are we allowed to create a priority where if, if it was set aside, I don't know how to put this, but if this, if this were, within the criteria of granting the total number of licenses, that there's a higher priority given to somebody that actually rents it out in the winter, say, to, as affordable housing? Because we, we've got a ton of high-end houses where they're essentially toys. Four to six or, if that, four to six weeks they're occupied and then the rest of the time they have a caretaker or it's ready to go when they come back from Paris or something. That doesn't do much good to the rest of the public in terms of rental stock in the winter for workers or people who live here all year round who had to vacate houses to make way for the summer rentals.
So, I think, Don, the answer to that, let's just go right to the regulation portion. Okay? We, we'll go back to the, to the Cape Cod wastewater fund in just a second. So, I think the answer to that question is probably yes. Because the act expressly authorizes a town to adopt by bylaw regulations on short-term rentals. And if you look on page four of my memo, I listed out the kinds of things that you can regulate by bylaw. And that includes to regulate the existence or location of operators under this section within the city or town, including regulating the class of operators and number of local licenses or permits issued to operators under this section and the number of days a person may operate and rent out an accommodation in a calendar year. So, I think that's pretty broad. And, you know, subject, of course, to constitutional challenge because I will, I would point out that the City of Boston already enacted a registration requirement, and they're being sued by Airbnb. And that, that case is at the preliminary injunction stage. And I've looked at those pleadings and essentially Airbnb is raising a number of constitutional claims. I think the fact that it's now in the state legislation that allows you to do this, I would, I think you probably could regulate it. We'd have to talk about, you know, exactly how to distinguish among various classes of operators. But as long as there's a rational basis that promotes the town's, that's fair and promotes the town's interests, then I think there's something we could, we could probably work out there. So, the, the simple answer is probably yes. Okay? Now, in addition, one of the, and, and this also goes to that question. One of the things that the legislation allows you to do is to establish a licensing process for short-term rentals. It's not unlike what some towns are doing with marijuana, where they haven't banned it. But they're enacting regulations, maybe limiting the number of licenses, you know, dealing with requirements for those establishments and, and revocation proceedings and fines and penalties and so forth. And this statute is very interesting. It allows the town, in the bylaw, to establish a civil penalty for violation of the bylaw. That is very interesting because there's no limit on the amount. You know, if there's a, you have a bylaw and you want to assess a fine, it can't be more than three hundred dollars. But that limitation does not, is not contained in, in the new law. The only thing I would also say is if you want to regulate the location of these, that most likely would require a zoning bylaw because you, then you're regulating the use of land. But for example, if you wanted it to limit it to certain zoning districts or if you wanted to provide an as-of-right use for a certain number of units and then a special permit for more than that, that's all possible, but it would be by zoning as opposed to a general bylaw.
And that would apply even to residential homes or are we talking back to...
Yes. Well, you know, if you're renting your home, you're operating a business.
So, but I, so we're not just talking about the professionally managed and the, and the two to three units. Now, we're talking about people's individual homes and we could possibly come up with a bylaw to regulate that.
Yes. You could say, for example, short-term residents are not permitted in X, Y, and Z zoning district. And they're permitted as-of-right in other districts and maybe by special permit. That's a use. So, you, you can. I'm not suggesting you do it, but you, I think you legally could do it.
Go ahead.
You had a follow-up on that and what Ed had just said.
Don't kill the messenger.
This isn't Boston. There is nobody who has any kind of building anywhere around here that's that far from the water. You would have a heck of a time trying to explain to people who live in this area, Harwich, how come they're precluded from renting their house while these people are okay with it.
Right. Absolutely. And it would require a two-thirds vote of town meeting, so we know how hard that is.
And, and this whole, a lot of this whole section is a continuation of putting into legal permissibility some, some things that some of the larger towns are looking for.
Right. Now, let, let's get back to Don's question about the registry. This section of the bylaw, of the act, allows the town to establish its own registry. However, you don't have to. You can rely, the state is required to develop a registry. And the D O R is, and the Department of Housing and Economic Development are going to be issuing regulations as to who has to register, when you have to register. And then your name, your, your name doesn't go on the registry, but the location, at least the street location, goes on the registry. And so, you could, when that registry is up and running, you could look at that and determine whether you think it's adequate for you to enforce the, 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 the whole act, actually, but in particular the, the community impact fees. And that, we're going to just have to wait to see exactly how much information is going to be required in the, on the state registry and whether or not that would be adequate for enforcement purposes.
That makes no sense. If you leave off the name and you just have the address and you create, and you created a class, let's say ten or more units that are operated by one individual, you wouldn't know that because you're not correlating that with a name or, or a trust.
And you're not with a street number. Under the law, on the state registry, all, all that is listed, apparently, is the street, not the address.
And unless we hired somebody to actually proactively go out, again, this relies on the good faith of people to say, "I'm coming in to let you know that I'm doing this." Because we don't have any...
Right. I think that was a compromise with Governor Baker.
It was.
That didn't want to have specific information for fear that, that's too much, people could take advantage of that.
So, you do have the option to establish your own registry system, which, by the way, isn't, doesn't have those limitations in it. It can, your, the, the town registry can include that specific information.
We know where you live.
Yeah. It's kind of a step.
Okay. Any more questions about the regulation? Because I do want to touch on the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund.
So, just one other question that I have is, again, back to the professionally managed fee. If we were to bring that to town meeting to look, to pass that, I don't really know that we would even be able to pass something like that. And we don't really have professionally managed...
No. Yeah. You know, I'll be honest with you, Julie. I haven't heard from any of my clients really much of an interest in either one of those impact fees.
So, we don't really have to be...
No. No. And you can wait and see. You don't have to do it immediately. You could do it two years from now if you wanted to.
Because Airbnb, the company itself would be treated differently. They'd have to pay it if they rented.
Right.
If I rented a room through them, then that's their problem to pay it or is it my problem?
No.
No. It's yours.
No, not the community impact fee, but it, because, well, they do have to pay it. So, the way the law works is...
I have to pay the four percent and two percent, wherever we decide on. But the impact fee, would they have to pay it then?
Uh, yes. The operator has to pay that, but they pay that to the town. The law allows a rental agency, it's called an intermediary, or a hosting platform such as...
Yeah, B O.
B O, we'll give them a chance. They can pay the fee on behalf of the operator and that it will be accepted by the state. But it's the operator that has the responsibility to actually pay all these taxes.
Then we get back to our original discussion of the issue being that you, you're doing this on the honor system. So, some people are going to come in and register their homes and others aren't. And so, how do we, how do we enforce that? And the state's not giving us any money.
If I were the state, or if you had a registry, I would go on Airbnb and I would look for every house on Airbnb that is listed in Harwich and make sure that they're on the registry.
If they don't do that, that you, you can't get, glean that information. The other question I have is if you pick up your keys, and typically this is what happens, on Saturday, there's like forty people around a, a real estate company that hands keys out. Are you saying that they're going to be responsible for the impact fee because they're kind of coordinating the rental?
The rental agency?
They're not a rental agency. They're real, these are real estate companies.
Yeah.
They're all over the place that, that deal with, say Larry's got an extra apartment. He doesn't want to deal with this whole thing. Every Saturday, people line up at around two o'clock and, and keys from the real estate company. They're not technically a rental company. They're, they're real estate brokers. That's really typical here.
But there is a, there is a rental contract.
Yeah, that's usually...
Yeah. But I'm, what I'm saying is who's liable then in the event that they're handling the transaction and the keys for the impact?
The operator is responsible for paying the tax.
Ed?
And the operator is the person who holds the property and is renting it. It's not...
Correct.
A person that's hired to...
Not the intermediary.
Change the lending and hand out keys and all of that.
Well, how would Airbnb ever be charged anything in that scenario?
Well, Airbnb isn't. It's, all of these fees go back to, to the renter.
Basically, you're, you're contracting Airbnb to handle for you, I guess.
But my understanding is Airbnb, in other states that have this routinely remits that tax.
They remit it because they withhold...
Right.
Correct.
The fee that's paid to, to the operator and they do the filing.
That's correct.
The state tax filing for the operator.
And the, and the, and the owner and the operator would say that they want that tax withheld, that they weren't going to do it themselves.
Right.
It's not mandatory.
Right. Exactly. That's why the, the hosting platform is allowed to submit that tax. And that's probably what's going to happen.
Right. If you choose that as an owner, you're allowed to say, "You collect it" and they'll, and you're responsible for paying it. But as an owner, you don't have to do that either. You can say, "I'll pay it."
And then you have to pay it on a quarter, on a monthly basis.
Monthly basis.
Right.
That gets me back to what Julie was saying. You go to that parking lot, you wait there, you get your key, and that's the only part of the, the rental that's apparent to anybody. And I choose not to go out and self-identify my, my place as a rental. We're not talking Airbnb. We're talking about local people.
Right.
How would you ever know on the state level that you, you should be paying me taxes now?
Because you're going to go search the registry is what he's saying. They're going to search all of the RBO, all of Airbnb's...
But you're not doing that. You're just renting your own place out, then you've rented the same people every year.
Yeah, that's true. You'll fall under the radar. You, you won't be found.
They won't be the first tax scuff laws.
They will fa, fall under the ra, radar until such time as a neighbor in, somebody in the neighborhood turns the house in. And then, and then...
And you can have a very...
The Department of Revenue will ask for their records and find out that they've been doing this for three years and want three years of back taxes, which they probably haven't collected because they haven't charged them. So, you know.
Yeah, I have a, hopefully this isn't too esoteric, but I have a neighbor who's fond of exchanging houses. He's been in Paris for a week and he's, is someone going to be chasing him down to try and get monetary value for that, for his house?
That is, there's nothing in the law that I could see that would cover that circumstance where it's just purely a...
Because that's becoming more popular, I understand.
But I, I don't believe that would be subject to the tax unless there's an actual rental fee charged.
Michael, do you have any?
Okay. So, the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund, because you, you're on Cape Cod, you're special for lots of reasons. But the law also provides for an additional two-point-seven-five percent excise tax on all forms of, it applies to short-term rentals, motels, hotels, et cetera. You are automatically in that. So, in Harwich, starting on July first, there's a five-point-seven percent state tax, there's a four percent local option tax, and there's a two-point-seven-five wastewater tax, which I'll just call it for shorthand. The act provides that a town may not withdraw from that wastewater tax for a period of one year after the effective date of the act. And the effective date of the act is May twenty-eighth of two thousand and nineteen, which means you cannot withdraw until May twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty. Withdrawal is by a town meeting vote and it requires a two-thirds majority. So, the act creates a management board. And every town, well, let me, let me go back. The act applies to every municipality in Barnstable County, Dukes County, and Nantucket. If you are subject to a two-oh-eight area-wide wastewater management plan, which you are, you're automatically in the front. None of the towns in Dukes County or Nantucket are in that two-oh-eight plan. But if D E P makes a determination that their C W M P is a suitable equivalent, then they are automatically in as well. The act creates a management board, which consists of one member, one voting member from every town. So, Harwich will have one voting member on this management board. That person is appointed by the Board of Selectmen, but it must be either a member of the selectmen, the town administrator, or a professionally employed staff person. And so, I just read this morning that in Mashpee, the board has already appointed their member and it's Andy Gottlieb. So, you need to be thinking about that at some point unless you're going to just withdraw from the fund. You know, you now can appoint that person if that's what you choose to do. So, so the funds, so the, the two-point-seven-five percent is not remitted to you. It's, it goes by operation of law immediately into this fund. And it's available for distribution among the towns that are members of that fund. And it should be, it shall be an equitable distribution. Now, that term is not defined. However, the project has to be, essentially has to be S R F eligible. And my understanding is that it's likely the, the D E P is going to, the S R F, well, let me revise that. The management board will only distribute funds to municipalities that have projects that are S R F eligible. Four communities, Provincetown, Chatham, Falmouth, and Nantucket have a special provision that makes them eligible for debt forgiveness for projects... that makes them eligible for debt forgiveness, for projects, for wastewater projects for which debt has already been issued. They're the only four. I believe they're the only four communities that actually have an operating sewer system.
Which four?
I'm sorry?
Falmouth, Chatham. Which four?
Uh, Chatham, Provincetown, Falmouth, Nantucket. I don't know why Barnstable's not.
Barnstable should because it has lots of.
Yeah, I'm not sure, that's a good question, but I don't think it is. I can double-check that. I can double-check that.
But to get back to what you're saying, the money, no matter how it's generated, let's say Harwich generates 15% of the overall amount from this, into this fund. There's no guarantee that Harwich wouldn't wind up getting 0% if somebody else competed against it?
I don't, I don't think that's.
We're all getting sued by CLF.
Well, I don't think that's a fair statement, Don, because the, the law does require an equitable distribution. So in Harwich's case, you have an SRF-eligible project for which you've authorized debt of, how much is it, 24 million?
Twenty-four million.
And so, you know, one of the, what I've heard people say is one of the advantages of staying in this fund is if you do have that kind of a project and you're that far along in your CWMP, it might be advantageous to join the fund because you'll be in a limited pool of towns that are actually eligible for funding through this fund.
Well, let me make my statement fair then.
Okay.
Let's say Harwich generates 15% of the overall pool and draws 40% to the detriment of other communities.
It's, okay.
It's still, if it's self-defined as being SRF-eligible, then you, you could be part of this thing and then find yourself not really getting an equitable distribution in terms of what you generated.
Well, these rules are going to be, have to be established, but my understanding is that they will take into consideration over a long period of time so that you might get funded upfront and Truro may not get anything. And as soon as Truro develops and, you know, their wastewater plan and they start doing whatever there is they're going to do, then the funding would shift to someone like Truro. And that's how it would become equitable over time.
Ed, do you have a question?
Um, the distributions are available for making debt payments as well as actual paying for capital?
Yes. Debt pay, uh, loan forgiveness, grants, and low-interest loans.
Okay. So you could yearly go in for a certain amount to pay your, your debt service on your bond?
Yes, that's correct. That's, that's correct. Now, again, I'm just basing this, Ed, on, on my reading of the statute. There are going to be obviously some rules that are going to be developed and applied.
John, did I read that, excuse me, Madam Chair, is, is there a 10% off the top going to the Cape Cod Commission's basically administrative fee?
Uh, it's not called an administrative.
It's not called that, but I.
There are two different sections.
I called it that, but.
It says that the Cape Cod Commission and the Martha's Vineyard Commission can provide technical assistance to the fund. And there's another section that says.
So, so let me stop you there. So in that section then, they have to, does the board then approve their, how they use that 10% fee?
Well, okay, so the second, the second provision says that they can spend up to 10%, the fund can, on hiring of consultants and a technical assistance. So it's up to the fund to decide who they're going to employ. They don't have to employ the Cape Cod Commission, but the Act authorizes them to provide the assistance if requested by the fund. And presumably, the, the fund and the commission will work out some kind of.
So that's not automatic and they can direct her where it goes then?
That's correct.
The board can.
The board can, the management board can. But it's possible that 10% will be off the top of whatever money is collected.
Yeah, that's what concerns me, I was trying, yeah, okay.
You know.
I don't like that, but.
Or, or a board could vote 1% to pay for the bookkeeper to handle all the paperwork and account for the funds and whenever needed.
Well, if you could put it in an escrow type of account, then I'd be okay with that. But it's just going to automatically be spent by the.
I, I would liken it to when Barnstable County was providing technical administrative support to SEBEC for a fee.
Yeah.
I think it would be similar.
But the difference here, I think, is that I don't know if in, in the adoption of the SEBEC rules, there was any upward limit on what that fee would be, whereas this is capped at 10%.
That's correct.
Just, just so I'm clear, so is the advisory board that determines who the consultants are that come on board?
Yes.
Or is it a different?
No, it's, it's called the management board.
The management.
And the way I read the statute, the management board is going to decide which consultants to hire, whether to get technical assistance from another agency, and also what kinds of studies they think they need to do to be able to implement the Act.
Because it'll be the, the management board to determine whether the project that the town is applying for funding for is an actual legit, legitimate project or just basically flushing money down a toilet.
Yes.
I thought, I mean, we've done some alternative technology projects and I thought one of the things was that they could determine, like we're doing Cole Brook, for instance, whether that would be eligible.
I believe the statute is worded broadly and adaptive management, yeah. Those kinds of things would be, I believe, the way I read the statute, eligible.
Which for us, we've already done quite a bit of adaptive.
Well, but you, but you, is that a borrowing though?
Cole Brook hasn't been borrowed yet, so that would be potentially.
But you borrowed from Muddy Creek, right?
Muddy Creek is basically done, although we could apply for.
Loan forgiveness or.
Loan forgiveness on that.
Refinancing, so.
That's true.
There would be, I mean, you, you're further, the town of Harwich is further along than most of the other towns on the Cape, so that only puts you in, I think, a better position.
But back to Don's question about, so the 2.75 that, you know, into this fund, that depends on how successful we are in technically collecting that in terms of registering properties and such.
Well, that 2.75% is collected by the state.
Right, but once you, once they've successfully managed to gather all this information and these people have had to pay these taxes.
Right.
Which remains to be seen.
Well, DOR is pretty good about finding people.
Yeah, well, that's true.
Not so much on the Cape.
Well.
Ed?
I know in, twelve years ago, when Maine adopted their short-term rental fee, they, they estimate in the first year their compliance rate was slightly above 95%. And the way they actually did that is because one of the things they realized is a lot of people who had been running out their homes were not being entirely up and up on declaring income. And they offered a.
Amnesty.
Amnesty for the first year and, and a threat. If caught subsequent, they would investigate back as far as they could and turn you over to the Internal Revenue Service. I mean, they, they were very blunt.
So the only final thing I want to mention is that if, with respect to the wastewater fund, you cannot withdraw from the fund if you are receiving financial assistance from the fund. So for example, if you were to take out some kind of a, a loan and it's a 10-year loan, you couldn't withdraw during that 10-year period. If you do withdraw and you want to get back into the fund, you can do that, but you're ineligible for any financial assistance for a period of two years after you're back into the fund.
Crystal clear.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
Any questions from any of the board members?
Just one last one. To Don's point, I thought I had read somewhere here for the equity question, that the amount you contribute in is where they determine equity. So I understand what you were saying, that over the length of time. But if we do contribute as a town, whatever, $500,000 a year for that period of time, the equity would be that we would, theoretically, we would get that money back that we contributed in.
One would hope.
But.
Over time.
Over time.
Now, that, you know, you could be 20 years down the line and, and determine that, hey, they haven't been applying that equitable distribution standard. So that would be a nice hot mess, I think, but.
Larry?
John, could you, maybe I didn't follow you, but could you clarify the use of these funds, a loan versus a grant? It sounded like you're inferring we have two options. We could borrow the money, it was like a zero, some interest, low interest, or we could, could you clarify that for me?
Yes, I can. I certainly can. So the, the funds can be used for principal forgiveness to local governmental units.
And that's a direct grant then?
That would be, that would be in your case, if you have outstanding bonds for Muddy Creek, you, you would be potentially eligible for a grant to pay off some of that, those bonds.
And then we, and in another case, we could borrow money for future payments, that? I'm just trying to clarify those differences.
Well, I, I don't, okay, so the fund is not actually authorized to, to provide you with.
Financing.
Financing, thank you.
Because you have to use SRF as the primary vehicle.
That's right.
Well, that's what confused me because you said you couldn't loan and borrow to, borrow at the same time.
What I meant, I should have said is that you can get principal forgiveness or you can get grants to pay your existing debt service. Or you can get outright grants.
Okay.
Thank you. But your borrowing would be through the SRF.
Yeah, okay.
And, and as, as I understand it, the four towns that were specially pointed out, because they have, have done projects in the past, they're, they're eligible to basically get grants from the fund to, to make up some of that retroactive payment.
That's right, even if the debt was incurred prior to the effective date.
Yeah, yeah.
And by the way, it does include Barnstable.
Yeah.
And it includes, and I, I'm sorry, Edgertown, Tisbury, Oak Bluffs, Falmouth, Chatham, Provincetown, Nantucket. But Barnstable's also included.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Leo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, for the record, could you just tell us the bill number for those that want to maybe look up and get the actual text of the bill?
It's, it's actually Chapter 337.
Yep.
Of the Acts of 2008. And if you go to the Mass General Court website and go up to, go to Special Acts and you put in Chapter 337 of the Acts of 2018, it will come right up.
Okay, three thou, just three, number 337, not 3,000?
No, three, Chapter 337.
337, okay.
Of the Acts of 2018.
Great, thank you. The documents that I, that you guys have been reviewing and I know that the attorney has been reading from, will they be made to the public? Because I, I have a ton of questions. I don't want to take up any more of your time tonight, but I would love a copy of that.
They're in the packet.
And I just would like to say for the record, you know, thank you, the board, for inviting the attorney here. And John, thank you for coming because I think going through it the way you did certainly helped me understand it a lot better. And I think it's, I think there's a lot more that I need to understand too. The other thing I'd just like to comment on, you guys have been mentioning a lot and talking a lot about the new additional revenue which will be collected now from those that we're referring to as ABNBs or Airbnbs, or these people basically, homeowners who have been operating businesses and not collecting room taxes. But I think the board has to remember, and certainly the town taxpayers have to remember, that all this affects people who have been renting rooms and collecting general room tax. So like even if we don't find any new taxpayer who's going to step up and say that they are renting their home for the summer, the town of Howard still stands to collect that 2.5%, the 4% and the 5.76, whatever it is, is general room tax.
To the state, yeah.
For the state. So even if we don't get those people to step up and admit that they're doing this, we're still, we're still eligible for quite a bit. And I, I just think I need to learn a lot more about the 2.75 on the, on the wastewater tax. And I appreciate the time.
Thank you, thank you, Leo. Ed?
Leo, and for others who are listening, if you go on the Department of Revenue's website, they have been posting up question and answers because they're getting besieged with people who are in the business wanting to know how it is. And they have been doing lots of explanatory and sort of almost updating it daily.
Could we?
I, I'm very uncomfortable about it just being in a packet because then you have to know what week you're looking for. Couldn't we put a link on the.
I was going to say, we could put it on the, we could put it on one of the main pages.
On the main page?
And I have two documents, the DOR did produce one that we, that they distributed. So we'll put both on, the attorney's write-up and DOR's write-up.
Or even link to the DOR.
So, so I would, the only thing I would caution you is that the DOR is continually, continually updating. It's called an FAQ.
Yeah.
But that FAQ also has phone numbers where you can call people at DOR. I was in Nantucket last week making this similar presentation and there were a lot of real estate agents. And their biggest concern was what do we tell people who are coming in for rental contracts now? What do you, what do you tell them the tax is going to be? It's a bit more complicated in Nantucket. Here in Harwich, it's pretty straightforward. But they have to, there was a lot of confusion about exactly how the ta, the tax would be assessed, who it applies to, and what real estate agents have to do with respect to their rental contracts.
Yeah, it's definitely a lot of information to, to try to digest, but. Ed?
And as I understand it, that the conference this Friday and Saturday, there is a, a session that the Department of Revenue is doing where it's expected a good portion of the presentation will be on this topic. I'm in the process of arranging for the Schleckman's Association meeting at 5:30 on Friday afternoon to have the, someone, of people available who are knowledgeable about the, the status of the implementation of the Water Trust Fund available.
That'll be helpful. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's, it's a practical matter, John. I mean, knowing that we have a charter and we have town meeting in May, we're like this close to the deadline for final form articles for the regular annual town meeting. And just a month longer than that for the special town meeting. For this rental season, it would seem to me to be implausible to be able to come up with everything that's necessary to, to deal with everything you've said.
Right. I would agree. The one thing you could do is change the percentage of the tax.
Yeah, but I'm just saying.
But the regulation.
That range of stuff that you're talking about, regulations, inspections and all that other stuff, even if we could get the articles there and in final form to implement the actions that be required to do that, it just seems kind of beyond us to be able to do it for this year.
And Don, I'm actually advising towns to be a little bit cautious about adopting a bylaw that creates a registry, for example, just because I want to see how the litigation resolves itself in federal court to see, because we don't want to be in a situation where now Harwich is being sued by Airbnb or whomever. And so, and then the other one is that, that 3% community impact fee, again, that's nothing you have to do now, you know.
Or ever.
Or ever, that's correct.
But we could retain that right.
Yes. There's no time limit on acceptance.
And the, the other issue about trying to come up with a, a registration system and presumably some sort of, of inspection of rentals is it would, we would have to appropriate money for staff to do that. And, and presumably after we start collecting the revenue, there would be funds for staff. But if the Department of Revenue is not allowing us to recognize any of the income in this first year, then there, we would not have any revenue stream to do that.
And DOR indicated that they expect the registry to be up sometime in March.
Yep.
So.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Thank you, John.
And on to the additional public hearing presentation, which is POCCA, Use of Glyphosate Roundup, Laura Kelly. Roundup, Laura Kelly. Laura, just to be clear, we've had a communication that the agenda item has not been specifically and sufficiently advertised and illegally used as an acronym, which is prohibited by the Attorney General's Office. So, I, we would invite you to either tonight give your presentation, and we would limit it to you, providing your presentation without comments from the public, and the board won't be taking any type of action, or you could come back at a future date with a more thorough presentation, and the board could participate, and the public would be invited as a full public hearing. So, it's up to you how you would like to proceed.
Thank you. May I ask a quick question?
Sure.
On your agenda tonight, it says hearing. So, assuming this was a hearing, and you have given notice to the public, so I...
So, this is a presentation this evening? It's not a full public...
Presentation.
Right, it's not a, it's not a public hearing, but we could have you come back with the public hearing and allow the public to speak. And, you know, the board can't take any action either, based on the way it's been listed on our agenda. It's not clear. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Notwithstanding all of that, I don't see that we'd want to come back with a public hearing to take an action by ourselves for something that we would necessarily want recommendations from the Board of Health over. So, my recommendation is, no matter what happens, if they want to proceed, they could proceed, but it does not come straight back here, that it comes through the Board of Health in order to be able to get some sort of coherent recommendations.
But technically, wouldn't, we would have to...
They've taken up pesticide before.
But we would have to refer it back to the Board of Health, correct? And that would be an action by the board?
You could have a Board of Health regulation, and you can have a selectmen's policy, so you probably could go either way. I think Don's right, that this probably should start in the, in the Health.
Oh, start it. Sorry, I misunderstood you, sorry.
No, no, I'm not talking about any kind of action, other than referring it to start the Board of Health.
I hear you.
The Board of Health can, at their choosing, take up whatever they would like.
Yeah. I'd like to hear a recommendation from them.
Either way.
Either way.
Right, I agree. So, why don't we do that?
Great, I'm fine with that. For me, I'm going to all towns. Four towns have already said yes, at the selectman level, and then it goes to the Board of Health. So, every town runs differently. So, I, you know, will take your request to go to your Board of Health first. I may also make a request to be, to have a hearing February 11th, that's in one month. And I will give a presentation at that time. I would offer to give you a presentation now that's 10 minutes or less, to give you an idea of where we're coming from, if you're, if the board is interested. I do wish to be able to allow the public to speak as well, and you guys. I mean, this, I wish to be an open conversation. We all kind of need to know.
So, we couldn't do that tonight?
I get that, I get that.
But we certainly, if you, you're welcome to do both. You can give us your presentation you intended to, without comment from the board or the public, and then come back for a public hearing.
And then come back for a, may I do that?
Just on, sorry.
On the public hearing, I usually leave it to Sandy to do that, the certain publications, and then the length of time.
Right.
So, I don't know if February 11th works. We'd have to just check.
Right.
And just so unclear, it looks like the last three pages, the process to voluntarily eliminate, is the form of the policy that you would like to have the board adopt?
Correct.
Just so I'm at least on clear on what we're intending to do.
I can explain that right now.
The publications would have to be like over a two-week period, and they have to have the lead time to get it published.
To get it published, that's...
So, I'm pretty sure this is going to come up with...
We're not going to be able to do it.
I don't think we can do it February 11th, with the lead time that we need to advertise. Ed?
Also, if you want, at that time, having gone to the Board of Health, I'm not sure where their schedule is either.
Correct, of course, correct.
When I get home.
So, ultimately, we can't commit to the 11th, but obviously, you're welcome to come back.
It's a suggestion.
But if you'd like to go ahead and proceed, Michael, did you have a question?
I just, I have a process question. Chris, maybe to you, maybe to Don, since he's well-versed on this. By no mistake of yours, we have the wrong agenda item. So, we did not alert the public that we were going to be discussing a town-wide ban on a product that's legal to sell. So, I'm not sure that we should be having this conversation at all.
Right.
And I'm not sure that Laura should be speaking, since this is a televised meeting, with her position on this at all.
Yeah, it was misposted.
If the chair decides to allow her to speak, I'm going to accuse myself. So, your decision, not mine. But I don't think we should be listening, hearing, talking on TV at all.
I, I agree, actually, and I would prefer to bring it back.
I just want to say, this is not a request for a town-wide ban, so I don't know where this is coming from. I just want the opportunity to have us be in the correct direction, so there's no miscommunication. I am not, we can, it is illegal to ban. So, don't, I'm not asking, we cannot ban the sale, we cannot ban the use. That is not why I'm here today. I would love the chance to just let you know why I am here, so we could go forward in the correct direction.
I do think we need to have, the posting is insufficient.
Yeah, I think we should bring it back.
We need to have the posting incorrect.
I think, I, we apologize. It's certainly not your error, it's ours, but we would prefer that you come back, where we're able to post it properly, so that we don't have any kind of legal implications.
Madam Chair.
I'm going to give you my request.
To Michael's point, it's more than just a small thought, it's a process. The postings have everything to do with putting people on notice that what might occur at the meeting, and what actions might occur, so that anybody who might be interested in that is on notice to come in. If you have a defective posting, you can't be assured that somebody who had great interest in this would show up, or even POCA meant. So, Michael's right. I mean, we really shouldn't be doing anything other than saying, appreciate your being here, and we guarantee you we're going to do something in the future where it is properly posted.
Yeah, I, I think that will... Ed, did you have another comment?
Well, and just a request that we communicate with Ms. Kelly.
The date.
About the, well, the date, but also the wording of the posting, so it's accurate on all, all sides.
I can say it one sentence real quick, and then I'll walk away. I'm asking towns to volunteer to not use glyphosate products, which is more than one, Roundup is a common name, but there are more, on any town-owned land. Not private people, not sale and use, it's, it's ballparks, where children play in Rome. And the reasoning is because you could get sued. The studies are proving direct harm to people, and I'm just here to protect the town. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate that. Okay. New Business, request for permission to close Villa Roma from January 5th, 2019, until the first week in March 2019, for repairs and general maintenance.
So move.
An interior, an exterior.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Request for permission to close Cape Seagrove for the month of February for cleaning and renovations.
So move.
Second.
Yeah, sorry, so just discussion.
Yeah.
So, on this, and I think this is a question for Chris, you know, we, we didn't do the filing in a timely manner to get their liquor license extended for a year-round license. So, their request is to close that in February for renovations. Does this board have the authority, which we'd have to have another meeting, does this board have the authority to grant them a full liquor license until they close as a temporary license?
Ed?
As I understand it, we just recently got the ability for them to apply to have their liquor license.
We did, but it still has to be signed by ABCC. So, the process now is it's been filed. I noticed a posting that they put out that said that they wouldn't be able to serve full-bar only beer and wine, and that's why I ask.
Yeah.
I feel like we should take a little responsibility for the time lapse. And if there's a way for us to get them a liquor license from now until February 1st, we should have that conversation. And again, I appreciate that it's not on the agenda, but I would like to look into that, and potentially have a special meeting to get them back up and running, if it's possible.
So, we've, we've granted them the full year-round liquor license?
It's been approved, as you said, by the state, but it has to go from, from the House to ABCC to have the final signature. Nothing can happen on what's been approved until ABCC signs.
Yeah, I think in terms of process, they, and they, I believe they have a seasonal now.
Yes.
So, they're operating under the seasonal. The governor just signed, I think we left at your places, the signature.
Yeah, right.
They came in today, I believe, with the application completed from ABCC. So, we will schedule as quickly as we can to have them into the, into the board, to have the hearing. I think there's a public hearing, obviously, required on a new license. So, we can try to expedite and do, you know, as timely as possible, but with the posting requirements and things of that nature. I mean, the only thing that comes to mind, which is kind of, I probably shouldn't suggest it, but if they wanted to open for a certain couple of days to try to capture some, I mean, there may be an opportunity for like a one-day liquor license. For some reason, I'm thinking that if you have a, you know, a liquor license now, that you can't have a one-day, too. But I believe if you don't have, if you're in the process of transferring it, you may be able to do that.
And I, I don't want to have any more, I'm not asking for any more conversation tonight. This is a request for you to look at, that's all.
All right, so we'll bring it back.
Thank you.
Okay.
I know.
It's a new license.
Yeah, all right. So, we'll bring it back on next week. Oh, sorry, moved and seconded. Any, any further discussion on the agenda item?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Business, review and approval of the draft land use control regulation. Chris?
So, Madam Chair, just two things on this. One, the, the board has previously voted the draft land use regulations, and what we, what we did as a entity was, we sent them into DEP to obtain their approval. They send it on to HUD, I'm sorry, DHCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development, to get their approval. They basically have approved it. What they're asking now, though, in, just in light of the posting, that they, they're looking to have where the selectmen, acting as sewer commissioners, host a public discussion on the proposed land use regulations at a regularly scheduled meeting. The only change that they made is when we sent through that regulation, the regulation said that, that we can change the, change the amount in each if we need to shift it around. They said that because, they being DEP, that because we only have approval right now to have flow going to the Chatham facility, they only wanted to authorize the Chatham facility at this point. So, they wanted to do it in phases, if you would. One phase was the section that's related to the Chatham facility, and then the second one, I would imagine, that if DHY comes online, then the second approval would be. So, the board had voted the entire project, the state has come back and said, we're not going to give you approval for the entire project, we want to do it in a phase. And since your, your phase, you have the IMA with Chatham, we only want to authorize the IMA with Chatham section. But we, I just looking at how we worded that, review and approve the draft land use controls, I mean, this is really just reaffirming that you have already voted the land use controls, and just reaffirming that with that change, that it's going to be a phased approval.
Did you have a question?
No.
Don?
I, I move that. We approve it in a phased manner.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion?
Is that enough depth, Chris, in the motion?
As per the recommendation of the town administrator.
And the...
Technically, that recommendation is...
Is to adopt what they asked for.
Yes, but I don't know if our posting was really the general discussion that they're looking for.
Okay.
So, if I could ask for just a delay.
Okay.
We'll do the posting with more detail to show that it's been already discussed. The only change is to have it be phased.
They're not in Russia, I'm not.
Can I, oh, sorry.
Removal, the second.
Well, I just have a question on that. Is there any, any reason that we should be looking closer at that in terms of the lawsuits and such that are out there? I'm just wondering, it's a general question.
Two different, two different animals.
We don't have to really worry about phasing it versus...
This is about financing.
This is really through SRF and the financing.
So, we don't have any of that concern? Okay, all right.
Can I ask one thing, though? They go out of their way, especially as an alumni of a government, to, to define what the LUC is, to define what Department of Mis Services is, but they don't say anywhere what SRF is, and we should probably make sure that the public understands what that stands for. This document does not do anything, of all the things it defines.
I'm guilty of that all the time, too, SRF, State Revolving Loan Fund.
So, we'll bring it back, to your point.
Yeah.
Just to have more clarity in the posting.
Larry?
I do think we need to look at it in regard to land control, where we have an opportunity to shift some wastewater uses. If we move it from a phase outside of the Chatham region to one neighboring, this agreement gets into trouble if we want to do some building. That's, I need to understand that.
I think that's not as...
I need to understand that a little better.
That's not as relevant, from the perspective that in the IMA with Chatham, they wanted to do it based upon the water resource area. So, their water resource area is basically Pleasant Bay and Sand Pond. So, the opportunity to divert from Harwich Center or Harwich Port into Chatham would require opening up that IMA with Chatham and having that discussion. But right now, we're precluded from anything outside of those two areas.
Okay. Just want to be careful with that.
At their, at their request.
Okay, so we had, do you want to...
I withdrew.
Oh, you withdrew your motion.
And I withdrew and asked that when it be brought back, that in addition to the properly worded agenda item, if, in the agenda item, you could also include a property, what the properly worded...
Motion is?
Motion is.
What they're looking for.
I'll give it my best.
Okay, so, we'll be bringing that back.
As a recommendation, you know?
And town administrator's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a couple of things that I wanted to kind of follow up on. Judy Wilson had come in at the last meeting and had expressed some concern. I was able to turn around, and I do want to thank the, the police department, as well as the, the town clerk's office, that we were able to get the rabies information and the result of the quarantine on, on that dog. So, we, we did provide that back to her within 24 hours, so we were able to do that. We have scheduled, just due to the posting requirements and notice requirements, the dog hearing will be February 6, 2019. So, depending upon the timing of the newspaper articles and such, the newspaper posting, so we have that scheduled. The chief, kind of the three takeaways that I had from that, the chief was conducting a internal review of what happened, why did it take so long to get back to her, and it was an appearance of us not being as timely as we could. From my discussion just the other night with the chief, he is in the process of finalizing that report, and I probably will have him come back on the 22nd and kind of produce the, go over the findings with the board. On the...
Since I was the one who made the postscript comment originally, I'm not just solely interested in what happened here in deconstructing that, just in general, I think it's a reasonable thought that if somebody gets attacked by an animal and the animal control officer's involved with it, that as soon as possible, they should be telling them, you know, what kind of vaccinations had taken place. That's, that's adorable, long-term thought. Again, he can say, well, this happened here, and we hope that it doesn't happen again. In general, everyone should have an expectation, if they had an attack from a dog where it broke skin, that as soon as possible, they get back to that person, even if it's by phone, just to say, you're okay.
Yeah, I believe he's going to do two things. One is just follow up on this specific incident, and then we do need a policy. I know he and I have had a discussion, and I've done a fair amount of dog hearings just over the years, and this is kind of a pretty significant case, so we need to have a better policy on that. I just wanted to, we do have the posting out, there was no changes to the job description, so we do have the Assistant Town Administrator position out, looking for applications due back by February 15th. If there is a member of the board, I know last time, you know, I invited a member of the board to be on the screening committee, if there is an interest to be on there, more than happy to have somebody on.
I'm not raising my hand for that. I raised my hand for a comment, but...
Go ahead.
And so is Ed.
Would you like to be on it? We'll let you know.
I'd like to make a comment, and that is, last time... I'd like to make a comment, and that is, last time, and if nothing else, I'm persistent when I, when I don't make it the first time I come back. But my, my input into this process or this position is, I would, as I argued before, I'd like to focus on, on what our need is, in specific, and the last time we talked about HR or procurement or legal assistance, whoever the board and you decide on specific requirement, because my sense is, is, and my, and my experience has been, it's easier to, to move from a specific knowledge and position to the more broad knowledge, and it is to go from the other way around, a general knowledge to specific input. And so my point before was, if we, what we've, we have a chance to go after what, if we decide as a group what our, our need is, to find someone that really focused on that, with the interest and ability then to expand if we move forward. I think the general part is not, I'm really not that happy, I don't think that's been that, and it's just not here. I think in all the towns, you see that. You end up almost with a, what's a comedy with a mini-me thing, someone trying to learn everything what everyone's doing. And I think that would also allow a better organizational structure, that you could delegate specific functions to a person, rather than do more of a general thing and then expand on it. And so I don't, I don't have a strong feeling what, what we see as our overall gap, I would like to see is focus on that with the right person to expand it then, so they become eligible, because one of our other criteria, you want someone who, that could fill the position if something were to happen to you, Chris, so that goes there. But I'd like to start specific and move that way, rather than going the other way.
Yeah, go ahead, Michael.
I just, one comment, Chris, I know this is your hire, if we could, when you pick your search committee on this, or the review committee, whatever you call it, can we get a fresh set of eyes on this? This is very close to the last one, I'd like to get some different people, thank Ed for getting involved.
I have changed it out, so I don't think there's any repeat, except for myself.
That was my own.
And I think we, too, sorry, Donna, I think to Larry's point, I'd like to make this an agenda item for next week.
Okay.
So we can have that conversation, because we should have it sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
And Dawn?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I, I'm just going to reiterate, I said the last time around, we can get deeper into it, but there are several needs, three, maybe four, that we've identified. It's probably not going to happen that we'll get a competency in all of those. All I asked for at the time was relative to other people in that particular field. So if they're good at human resources, how good are they? Same thing for procurement, because you can't compare human resources against procurement, but you could say, this person has kind of average procurement experience, and this person's outstanding in human resources. That's kind of where I was hoping that we'd go, is get somebody who's qualified for the whole thing, but they have an outstanding competency somewhere in something that we need.
Yeah, I think we definitely need to have further discussion on it, so we'll agenda it for next week.
Okay. Thank you.
And then just, we are in the process, now that I have Bob, Bob Lawton here, I mentioned that last time, we are looking at, the surveyor position has been vacant for a little bit, so we are looking at filling that, so we'll have ads out for that. And then we had a part-time building official that he wound up going to, Churro didn't have anyone. So they, they came and they kind of raided us to, not raided us, but took, we have two and a half, and they had none. So it's a little bit tough on that case. But we are looking for a couple of positions, so we will have those ads out to try to fill. Because just a reminder, in our office, I mean, we're down to two out of four. So.
Yeah, that's a, I mean, you, you, to that point, you know, we need to have that discussion as well. Michael?
But we're lucky enough to have Bob Lawton.
Yeah, no.
We are lucky to have Bob.
Dawn?
Yeah, but I'm, that's where I'm going with this, not to be contentious about it, but whether it's Bob Lawton or Jim Smith, I'm looking at 4.4.1 of the charter, and I'm just wondering how he got appointed without the Board of Selectmen approving the appointment.
Only a temporary appointment.
Maybe, but it doesn't delineate that in the charter.
But don't send him away because of that.
Not saying that, I'm just, I'm just trying to get our ducks in order because.
I can't think of someone more qualified.
The last time, that may well be, but it doesn't say, except in the case of really well-qualified people, you shall follow this.
So we'll bring that officially appointed next week.
Yeah, I'll, we have a, yeah, we can send it through, I'll attach the contract that we got.
Okay.
And then just two last things, I did reach out last Friday, met with the folks from Cape Destinations, had some discussions, had some discussions with the superintendent, I know several selectmen had asked me individually to do that. There's certainly a fair amount of lack of communication on both sides, which is, I think, unfortunate.
Both sides of what? Lot of us.
Well, I, I think that Cape Destinations made certain assumptions, and there was reasons why they didn't bid. And by not bidding, it did not give an opportunity of the school department to have discussions with them on ways that they could have structured the bid. So I think that unfortunately, there's a missed opportunity to have them try to work and see what elements are out there. I was at the groundbreaking ceremony for the, for the tech school last Friday, and the, the executive director of the collaborative, you know, I kind of kiddingly said, how, you know, how come you're raiding all these, all these places for buses? And, you know, he was pretty quick to say that, you know, no one bid, so it's a question of, they're trying to fill a need that they've been asked to fill. So at least the, I did look in, I don't know if I've made any significant progress, but I, I did try to reach out in terms of that.
Thank you for following up on that, Dawn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To my original point, however, that only underscores the fact that when I asked the question and got no answer, there was no pre-bid conference, where they could have found out before they went out. And it doesn't address the issue of forgetting about whether the collaborative is the greatest thing since buttered toast. It doesn't address the fact that it wasn't an agenda item on their agenda when they voted it and took an action, which they are have, they're going to have to own.
I just reached out to the owners as a company in, in Harwich, I thought that was important to do, and had a nice visit, had a nice visit with them, and certainly put my two cents in with the superintendent. And then just the last thing, I know last week I missed a couple of important meetings. It was a finance committee meeting, a capital, I'm sorry, a CPC meeting. And I was out, you know, because my wife had surgery, and just happy to report, you know, it's obviously has been a distraction for me to a large degree. She did go through the surgery, actually, I just learned for coming over that it was a benign, benign growth, so.
Which is terrific.
It's a level of stress that's off of me, so I just appreciate, I know the board has, individually has expressed your support, and I appreciate that very deeply.
And we're glad to hear that, Chris, it's great news. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board of Selectmen report, Dawn?
Off to the MMA.
Yeah. Ed?
Sam.
Ed, Ed?
I have nothing.
Nothing. Move to a chair.
Thank you. Your turn.